Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the January 10, 2024 Public Board Meeting of the Halton District School Board. We will begin with roll call. Trustee Ahmed is in transit and may arrive later. Trustee Amos.
Good evening.
Trustee Baxter.
Happy New Year.
Good evening.
Trustee Brydon.
Good evening.
Trustee Daniele.
Thank you, I'm here.
Trustee Gray.
Hello.
Trustee Oliver.
Good evening, everyone, and Happy New Year.
Trustee Rocha is unwell this evening. Trustee Shuttleworth.
Good evening.
And Trustee Zhang.
Good evening.
Thank you very much. Trustee Gray, would you make a motion to go into Committee of the Whole Private Session respecting property matters, negotiations, legal matters, and personal information? This meeting is not open to the public pursuant to the Ad Act 207-2.
Yes, I will, thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Shuttleworth, would you like to second this motion?
Yes, I would.
Are there any objections to moving into private session? Seeing none, the motion is passed by unanimous consent, and we are now in private session. Vice Chair Oliver, the floor is yours.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the January 10, 2024 Public Board Meeting of the Halton District School Board. I would like to extend a special welcome to our guests, both in person and online. Trustees are present, both in person and online this evening. Joining us in person are Trustees Amos, Baxter, Bryden, Danielle, Gray, Oliver, Shuttleworth, and Zhang, as well as Student Trustees Shree Balan and Alim Zinov. And now, Trustee Ahmed is also joining us online. Trustee Rocha has said her regrets. Director Anis, please let us know which staff are in attendance this evening.
Thank you so much, Chair Collard, and Happy New Year, everybody. We do have a full complement of staff here this evening to support the meeting.
Tonight, Trustee Bryden will be honoring the land.
Sayonara, everyone. Halton, as we know it today, is rich in history and modern traditions of many First Nations and the Métis. From the Anjanabe to the Arawandaran, the Hodnashoni and the Métis, these lands surrounding the Great Lakes are steeped in Indigenous history. As we gather today on these treaty lands, we have the responsibility to honor and respect the four directions: land, waters, plants, animals, ancestors that walked before us, and all the wonderful elements of creation that exist. We would like to acknowledge and thank the Mississaugas of the Credit First Nation for sharing their traditional territory with us.
Thank you, Trustee Bryden. At the first meeting of each month, we formally acknowledge the history and heritage months and days as identified by the Government of Ontario. Please join us in celebrating and supporting the diverse communities that exist within our Halton communities. This month, we recognize Tamil Heritage Month. Tamils began migrating to Ontario as early as the 1940s. Since that time, Tamil Canadians have overcome tremendous obstacles and have made significant contributions to the growth and prosperity of Ontario. January is an important month for Tamil Canadians. The Tamil Harvest Festival, Thai Pongal, as well as other Tamil artistic and cultural events take place this month. By proclaiming the month of January as Tamil Heritage Month, the province of Ontario recognizes the valuable contributions that Tamil Canadians have made to Ontario's social, economic, political, and cultural fabric. Tamil Heritage Month is an opportunity to remember, celebrate, and educate future generations about the inspirational role that Tamil Canadians have played and continue to play in communities across Ontario. We are now up to item 1.2, Approval of the Agenda. Trustee Baxter, would you make a motion to approve the agenda?
Yes, I would.
Thank you. Trustee Amos, would you like to second this motion?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Is there any discussion regarding the approval of the agenda? Are there any objections to approving the agenda? Seeing none, the agenda is approved by unanimous consent. Are there any declarations of possible conflict of interest for this evening's agenda? Thank you. Seeing none, we now move up to item 2.0, Delegations Presentations to the Board. And I will pass the gavel to Trustees Gray and Shuttleworth, the co-chairs of the Inspire Awards, to present this evening's awards.
Thank you very much, Chair Collard. An Inspire Award is given by the Halton District School Board to recognize students, staff, and volunteers from across the system who have supported students and contributed to their achievement and wellbeing in an exemplary way. The Inspire Awards reflect the board's commitment to equity and are inclusive of all stakeholders. We are proud to have such innovative, creative, and inspiring individuals to honor tonight. Tonight, we are going to honor four recipients, two who are with us today and two who will be recognized by Trustee Zhang on Friday at Frank J. Hayden. So for tonight, our first award winner will be Connie -- oh, sorry, our first award winner will be Mark Wilson, who is from White Oak Secondary School, and he will receive his award from Trustee Kelly Amos.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the January 10, 2024 Public Board Meeting of the Halton District School Board. I would like to extend a special welcome to our guests, both in person and online. Trustees are present, both in person and online this evening. Joining us in person are trustees Amos, Baxter, Bryden, Danielley, Gray, Oliver, Shuttleworth, and Zhang, as well as student trustees Shrebalin and Alim Zanov. And now trustee Ahmed is also joining us online. Trustee Rocha has said her regrets. Director Anis, please let us know which staff are in attendance this evening.
Thank you so much, Chair Collard, and Happy New Year, everybody. We do have a full complement of staff here this evening to support the meeting.
Tonight trustee Bryden will be honoring the land.
Say one say our way one. Halton, as we know it today, is rich in history and modern traditions of many First Nations and the Métis. From the Anjanabe to the Arawandaran, the Hodnashoni and the Métis, these lands surrounding the Great Lakes are steeped in indigenous history. As we gather today on these treaty lands, we have the responsibility to honor and respect the four directions: land, waters, plants, animals, ancestors that walked before us, and all the wonderful elements of creation that exist. We would like to acknowledge and thank the Mississaugas of the Credit First Nation for sharing their traditional territory with us.
Thank you trustee Bryden. At the first meeting of each month, we formally acknowledge the history and heritage months and days as identified by the Government of Ontario. Please join us in celebrating and supporting the diverse communities that exist within our Halton communities. This month, we recognize Tamil Heritage Month. Tamils began migrating to Ontario as early as the 1940s. Since that time, Tamil Canadians have overcome tremendous obstacles and have made significant contributions to the growth and prosperity of Ontario. January is an important month for Tamil Canadians. The Tamil Harvest Festival, Thai Pongal, as well as other Tamil artistic and cultural events take place this month. By proclaiming the month of January as Tamil Heritage Month, the province of Ontario recognizes the valuable contributions that Tamil Canadians have made to Ontario's social, economic, political, and cultural fabric. Tamil Heritage Month is an opportunity to remember, celebrate, and educate future generations about the inspirational role that Tamil Canadians have played and continue to play in communities across Ontario. We are now up to item 1.2, Approval of the Agenda. Trustee Baxter, would you make a motion to approve the agenda?
Yes, I would.
Thank you. Trustee Amos, would you like to second this motion?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Is there any discussion regarding the approval of the agenda? Are there any objections to approving the agenda? Seeing none, the agenda is approved by unanimous consent. Are there any declarations of possible conflict of interest for this evening's agenda? Thank you, seeing none. We now move up to item 2.0, Delegations Presentations to the Board. And I will pass the gavel to trustees Gray and Shuttleworth, the co-chairs of the Inspire Awards, to present this evening's awards.
Thank you very much, Chair Collard. An Inspire Award is given by the Halton District School Board to recognize students, staff, and volunteers from across the system who have supported students and contributed to their achievement and wellbeing in an exemplary way. The Inspire Awards reflect the board's commitment to equity and are inclusive of all stakeholders. We are proud to have such innovative, creative, and inspiring individuals to honor tonight. Tonight, we are going to honor four recipients, two of whom are with us today, and two who will be recognized by trustee Zhang on Friday at Frank J. Hayden. So for tonight, our first award winner will be Connie, oh, sorry, our first award winner will be Mark Wilson, who is from White Oak Secondary School, and he will receive his award from trustee Kelly Amos. Mark Wilson is a teacher at White Oak Secondary School who consistently demonstrates an exceptional commitment to his students' wellbeing and academic success. Prioritizing through preparation for each session, he presents complex chemistry concepts in a structured and comprehensible manner, fostering a love of learning and efficient comprehension among his students. In response to recent modifications in the IB chemistry curriculum, Mark displayed remarkable initiative by dedicating his summer to understanding new content and requirements. Instead of merely adopting the changes, he strategically integrated and accentuated differences within daily lectures, enhancing the learning experience for his students. His creative approach holds students' attention throughout lectures, reflecting his commitment to effective content instruction. Mark's strong speaking skills and motivational teaching inspire students to connect their learning with personal interests and aspirations extending beyond the classroom. Parents express gratitude for Mark's teaching abilities, emphasizing the positive impact he has on his students. Congratulations, Mark. Our next award winner will be Kimberly O'Driscoll from WH Morden Primary School, and will receive her award from trustee Carol Baxter. Kimberly O'Driscoll is a teacher at WH Morden Primary Schools, whose passion and unwavering enthusiasm brightens the days of her students and colleagues. She has cultivated a learning environment that fosters student leadership and wellness. Through an innovative and creative approach, Kimberly's classroom lessons engage students by offering hands-on experience. From hosting history museums for younger students to having students develop their own countries, her lesson leaves lasting impressions. Every week, Kimberly teaches a new mindfulness strategy and reminds students of the importance of taking time to care for their mental health. Kimberly's dedication extends beyond the classroom. For several years, she has overseen Change Club, a program that provides students with leadership opportunities through the organization of monthly school events and fundraisers. On World Kindness Day, she orchestrated an innovation that delivered flowers and student-written thank you cards to the school staff. Kimberly's bright smile is reflected in the faces of every student and staff member she interacts with. The WH Morden community is incredibly grateful for her ongoing contributions and the positivity that she brings every day. Congratulations, Kimberly. So congratulations to our two Inspire Award winners who are here with us this evening, as well as the two that will receive awards from trustee Zhang on Friday. I want to encourage everybody out there to consider creating opportunities for Inspire Awards. Everyone can nominate people or organizations who support students and their achievement in the Halton District School Board. You can find that information on the website. Before we finish, I'd like to take a quick note to say thank you to Susan Thrasher in the director's office and to all the members of the communication team who support the trustees in delivering this awards program. Thank you very much.
Thank you to trustees Gray and Shuttleworth for presenting that this evening. Before we move on to the student trustee report, I would just like to make sure that everyone is logged into the Creston system this evening, because we will be needing that to vote later on today. And now moving on to the student trustee report, trustees Shrebalin and Alim Zanov. We are looking forward to your report.
Good evening, trustees, staff, and guests in the gallery and those tuned in online. Trustee Alim Zanov and I are so excited to be back in the boardroom for the first time in 2024 and are honored to deliver our first student trustee report of the new year. Starting with the Student Senate updates, last night on Tuesday, January 9, from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM, our January Student Senate meeting took place with over 100 senators in attendance. The meeting was centered around ensuring student safety within HTSB schools, and senators were fortunate to hear from, as well as ask questions to Superintendent Fowler and Taha regarding their department's ongoing projects and policies that hold staff and students accountable for safety of all kinds, from consent culture to reporting mechanisms. We also introduced the Halton Learning Foundation's HLF Month to our senators, encouraging them to begin brainstorming fundraising ideas and connect with their school's administration as to how they can support fundraisers in April of this year. Student senators also heard from the leads of two other major student consultation bodies within the HTSB, that being the HTSB Student Equity Committee and the HTSB Mental Health and Wellbeing Student Advisory Committee, regarding the student voice contributions to HTSB policies and departments. So shout out Judy Wang, Sienna Su, and Sabrina Dean for all the hard work they do for our board.
Moving on, earlier in December, we released applications for the general student body to be able to join our five Senate subcommittees. We received over 250 applications from students all across the board with a total of 80 available positions. So great numbers overall. We by far surpassed our targets. Trustee Shrebalin and I, along with our operations coordinator, Shereel Kizgoda, will be sorting through them all and will be releasing results to selected students by the end of January.
On December 13, HTSB's first-ever junior council meeting invited student leaders from kindergarten to grade five and six, student leaders from kindergarten to grade five and six schools to this very boardroom. Students were excited to meet one another, student trustees, Director Anis, as well as trustee Bryden, vice chair Oliver, and chair Collard, in their first introduction to student advocacy. They learned all about Student Senate, as well as the HTSB 2020-2024 multi-year plan, through engaging in hands-on activity led by our very own Student Senate Subcommittee Co-chairs. So shout out to them for all their hard work.
Moving on, the long-awaited Human Rights Symposium finally took place, as I'm sure many of you have seen it, on Monday, December 11, 2023. Trustee Shrebalin and I had the great pleasure of being the hosts of discussion. The general feedback from students was quite positive. We were able to provide the opportunity for our passionate student leaders to voice their concerns and ideas on the subject of holistic health to the entirety of the HTSB student body. The follow-up activities developed by our Student Equity Committee were also very well-received. The symposium, as you may have noticed, did happen to be on the shorter side this year with the introduction of the new formats. However, it was a step in the right direction in terms of creating engagement. For future years, we definitely have a lot of information to go off of for now.
With that, through trustee Alim Zanov and I's role with OSTA ECO, the two of us have been selected to orchestrate a session at our next OSTA ECO conference in February to provide resources to other public board student trustees as how they can incorporate artificial intelligence ideas into their board alongside fellow student trustees from the Thames Valley District School Board and the Ottawa Carlton District School Board. In doing so, we are aspiring to host a survey through OSTA ECO's Policy and Research Department to all its student trustee members to gain insight as to how AI is utilized across the province and include artificial intelligence K-12 education as a recommendation in the organization's vision document to the ministry for the next four years. With that, the two of us have been connected with representatives from People for Education to support the survey and OSPO to form an AI Subcommittee within their new student trustee committee launching in this year as well, as potentially hosting a trustee training session at one of their July conferences.
Lastly, it's almost time for the student trustee elections, which is a tiny bit terrifying considering that we just entered this room like almost yesterday. We did start the work on the election with our elections officer, Asher Duvan. This year, we are expanding our in-person presence for the election a bit more with the introduction of election information booths in all schools across Halton facilitated by our student senators to hopefully ramp up the amount of voters. We will also be releasing more information on the election process via school messenger a bit later in the month, but to give a small insight to all interested students who are hoping to run for the position, we will be having a virtual information session on Tuesday, January 30. And with that, we are wrapping up our student trustee report. Thank you, everyone, for listening, and trustee Shrebalin and I are off to the start of our exam season.
Thank you. Are there any questions for our student trustees this evening before they have to depart? Thank you very much for keeping us up to date on how busy you are. I can't believe how much you've done since December, considering we had two weeks off. Please continue to do well and good luck on your exams. Thank you. We are now up to items under section three of our consent agenda. For approval, we have the Halton District School Board minutes meeting December 6, 2023. For receipt, we have the following information items: the order paper, board report schedule, policy and governance procedure review schedule, administrative procedure review schedule, Halton District School Board minutes meeting from November 1. And correspondence to the board, we have a letter from the Chair of Jay Weston to Minister Letchey regarding Toronto Youth Cabinet's recommendations to improve children and youth mental health, and a letter from EFO Halton Elementary Teachers regarding student physical safety and mental wellbeing. Be it resolved that the Halton District School Board approve the consent agenda and receive the information items for January 10, 2024. Trustee Danielley, would you make this motion?
Thank you, yes, I would.
And trustee Bryden, would you second this motion?
I would.
Thank you. Are there any items that need to be pulled for discussion? Trustee Shuttleworth, is that you bringing in?
Yeah. Okay. I was wondering if we could pull the administrative procedure review schedule, please.
Okay. Is there any other request for anything to be pulled? Okay, we will pull that now then, trustee Shuttleworth, and you may ask your question.
Right, thank you. Thank you. Through you, Chair, to the director, this is really more of a general question rather than a question specifically for any of the particular administrative procedures. I'm just wondering, I know there has been quite a bit of public input onto some of the procedures that are out there, and I'm just wondering, there's a lot here that are overdue, and I'm wondering how our board is ensuring that we are responding to public feedback.
Thank you for the question, trustee Shuttleworth. We are actually in the process of, you know, developing some guidelines about the kinds of feedback that we should be receiving from the public and stakeholders on different policies and procedures. And so we're actually working through that right now, so something should be coming fairly soon on that.
Great, thank you.
Did you have a follow-up at all?
No, I was just, again, it was a general question. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there any objections to approving the consent agenda?
I have one comment.
Go ahead.
I just have a quick comment, and that's looking at the correspondence, 3.3.1, letter from Chair Weston. I would suggest that we include the name of the school board when we're referencing correspondence. Thank you.
Yes, I would agree. Can we make a note of that, please, manager? Come on, thank you. Seeing no objections, the consent agenda is approved by unanimous consent. We are now up to section four, Items for Ratification Action, and we have several items for this evening. Item 4.1.1, Communications with Trustees and Delegating the Board Policy and Governance Procedure, Report 24007 submitted by trustee Bryden, and I will read the motion. Be it resolved that the Board of Trustees adopt the communicating with trustees and delegating the Board Policy and Governance Procedure with the recommendations listed in Report 24007 and that all prior versions be revoked. Trustee Baxter, would you make this motion?
Yes, I would.
Trustee Zhang, would you second this motion?
Yes, please.
Trustee Bryden, would you like to speak to this report?
Thank you. I'll add a small snippet as recent chair of the committee, that at the final committee meeting before this was submitted, one change to the policy was, pardon me, to the Governance Procedure was made under 4.1, delegating the Board General. There's some clarity added. We had had a broad statement about any governance matter, and we specified that that is any Board policy. So we can be delegated on any policy at any time, and that's the clarity that's added. This is not consistent with what was suggested in one of the PD webinars that we attended recently, where they recommended limiting to only those in upcoming votes. But this is the way that we were interpreting that any governance matter. So if anyone wants to propose differently, that is a possibility. I will also ask Chair Collard, who was chair of the committee that developed the rest of this procedure and policy, if she wishes to speak.
Thank you, and I will pass the gavel to vice chair Oliver so that I may speak to this. We, as you know, we went through a very rigorous process to come up with these final documents. There was a survey to determine the scope of work. There was a survey to determine direction once the scope was finalized. And then we came to committee of the whole and spent about an hour discussing various elements. Changes were made at the request of trustees, and when we put together the final draft, we asked for trustees to take yet another look, and more changes were made. So we do feel like we heard the voice of this board and hopeful that trustees will be able to respond in support of this motion. If there are any questions, please do let me know. We have a question from trustee Baxter.
Thank you, through you, vice chair Oliver, to, I guess, either trustee Bryden or chair Collard. I received a few questions from the public with concerns, having read the new Governance Procedure specifically, and I just wanted to ask you to provide some clarity. I did answer the question myself, but I was asked, does this make it harder to delegate? And so my answer, just full disclosure, was that no. From my perspective, this new Governance Procedure clarifies rules in a very public way that have always existed to make it very transparent how we go about receiving feedback from the public. So just if you could confirm that. And then the other question that I received was about the decorum rules specifically, and asking, do they apply to those of us in the meeting, so to trustees and senior staff, or are they only applying to the public gallery? Thank you.
So for the first question, you answered it very well, and I actually believe that by adding clarity, we've made it easier for people to delegate because they understand who it is that they're delegating to. Delegations are for the trustees because we are the ones voting, and that is why we don't allow certain topics to be delegated on. And by explaining that more fully in the Governance Procedure, I believe we've made it much easier for the public to understand the purpose of delegation. With respect to the second part, absolutely, the rules of decorum apply to everyone in this room. And further to that, we have code of conduct as trustees, and staff also have a code of conduct, and we all must adhere to that very strictly. So yes, absolutely. Thank you very much for your questions.
Okay, I also have a question from constituent, and that was to gain some more clarity around the eligibility criteria for delegations. So the first part of the question is, can public now delegate about any topic? And so the answer is, public can delegate on any policy, governance procedure, or governance bylaw, or public can delegate, sorry, on any item that will be voted on by trustees within a five-week period. If constituent wishes to delegate on something that will be brought to the board within a five-week period, they may submit that in that timeframe. Is there then the onus on our manager to maintain, I guess, a list of submitted delegations and see how they fit in with the agenda?
The manager would work with the chair and vice chair to determine the best suitability for presenting the delegation.
Okay, thank you. And follow-up then. The question is, is there a summarized list of eligibility criteria for a delegation? And I know that a number of points have been outlined, but I wonder if it maybe would be a good idea to kind of have it all in one spot? Or do you feel that it is specified well enough throughout the document that the criteria are clear?
Is it the criteria for eligibility regarding topics or the criteria regarding...
For a delegation.
It is in one place, I do think, yes. Yeah.
Under decorum, if I may continue, so similar to trustee Baxter... Under decorum, if I may continue, so similar to Trustee Baxter, but the question is, I think we need to clarify that applause after Inspire Word presentations by trustees and staff are appropriate. And would then the Chair invite the audience to participate as well? So what we're talking about is any extraneous noise or gestures or anything that are beyond showing our appreciation for people being acknowledged. Thank you. I hope that is clear to the people asking.
Thank you for fielding those questions from the public, both you and Trustee Baxter. I appreciate that very much, because I was actually very heartened that no one wanted to delegate the board on this policy and governance procedure. I thought it would have been fitting if someone chose to do so. And very heartened that no one did choose to do that. It makes me feel like we've done the right thing in what we've written. And so that is a, that is good news piece for us. So if there's any debate, I guess you're still chairing the meeting so far.
I can pass the gavel. I do have a couple of small wording issues that I've
Come across? Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Page two, paragraph two, with respect to submitting a request. It states, "By no later than noon, two business days before, and no more than five weeks." I wonder if that "and" should be an "or"?
No, that is an "and," because if you are more than five weeks...
So no later than-
It's an "and," yeah. It has to be an "and."
It's an "and"? Okay. Page three, paragraph, 4.3, paragraph three. Written, so this pertains to if a delegation was not accepted, there'll be a written, I guess, summary report copy to the board of trustees. So do we have a process for that, or is that something that will be thought out later?
The Chair is responsible, and has always been responsible, for ensuring that the Board of Trustees is aware of why a delegation has been denied.
Thank you. And paragraph four on page three, there's a disclaimer around that a person may delegate again if new information is presented. And I'm just wondering if the "new" should have a qualifier, as in substantially new, or?
And the purpose for that is to ensure that we don't get delegations that repeat what they've already said. So anything that's new in a delegation is new. Putting the word substantially in front would then make it not objective at all.
And I guess that would be vetted out during the review of the delegation process to compare the two delegations. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there any other debate? I see no one on the speakers list. Thank you. We have exhausted the speakers list, and so I am going to bring up the item for vote. Please cast your votes. Thank you. That vote passed unanimously. I appreciate the support. Moving on to item 4.1.2, CAC membership, as submitted by Superintendent Ruddock. I will read the motion. Be it resolved that the Halton District School Board approve the recommended addition of Ontario Parents of Visually Impaired Children, OPVIC, as new association on CAC. OPVIC is a provincial organization that represents children and youth who are blind or who have low vision, deaf blindness, or vision loss. Be it also resolved that the Halton District School Board approve the recommended appointment of Erin Ruppel as the HDSB CAC representative for OPVIC. Trustee Ahmed, would you make this motion?
Yes, I would, please.
Trustee Baxter, would you second this motion?
Yes, please.
Superintendent Ruddock, would you like to speak to this report?
Thank you, Chair Collard. The report is before you, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Superintendent Ruddock. Is there any debate? Trustee Shuttleworth.
Thank you, through you Chair to Superintendent Ruddock. I have a ques- so I know there are eight current local institutions on CAC, and this will make it a ninth. Did we actively recruit, or did they come to us?
Thank you through the Chair to Trustee Shuttleworth. We did actively recruit for new associations last December, January, when the last CAC folded, and we were forming the new CAC. So we had a recruitment process using social media, our website, advertisements in the paper. I'm not sure where OPVIC, at this stage, whether it was something that they noticed during that recruitment strategy and then took some time to find a candidate, or whether it's something that's always been on their radar, that they didn't indicate how they landed at it at this time, but we do have a recruitment process.
Yes, so can I have a follow-up? So I'm just wondering, because I know, like, I look at CAC from when I was there, and it's a great organization, or has great organizations that are there for the students. But I'm always wondering how we are ensuring that all the populations that are within our school have some representation or some sort of outlet at CAC? And I'm wondering if there is a way that we, I don't know if you can do a catalog or a inventory to find out if we are ensuring where we have, like, we have Autism Ontario, and we have Easter Seals, Voice Community, we have two community livings, but looking at, are there areas that are something we might look at finding recruitment for?
Thank you, we can take that back.
Thank you.
Trustee Gray.
Thank you very much, through the Chair. I'm really encouraged to see that we have, I believe it's eight, this will be the ninth. In all of my years as a trustee, I don't think we've ever had such a rich group of people in numbers helping our CAC committee. My question is, is there an onboarding process for new representatives coming into CAC?
Thank you, through the Chair to Trustee Gray. We do have an onboarding process, so at the beginning of this CAC's term, there was a training module that, at that point, was Superintendent Bogue, who was leading that on my behalf. And then we use the recording of that training module for interim appointments.
Thank you. Seeing no other speakers on the list, I'm going to bring up the vote. Please cast your votes. Thank you. That passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Superintendent Ruddock. The next item on our list is 4.1.3, Proposed Three-Month Trial Meeting Schedule for Board and Committee of the Whole Meetings, submitted by Manager Khan. Please go ahead, Commander Khan.
Thank you so much, Chair Collard. Just to say to the Board of Trustees that this really is an opportunity for us to look at being more efficient with our meeting and with our time, respecting both trustees, staff, and community. And certainly not an opportunity for less information, but for more efficient information. Manager Carrillo has been a little bit obsessive about creating... Did I say, what did I say?
You said Carrillo.
Oh, my gosh. It's the first time. It's the first time. Manager Khan, that's how the brain works. Manager Khan, please forgive me, is a little bit obsessive about tracking, you know, APs and policies and changes and things that come to the board. And so she's really dedicated herself to creating a structure that will help us to streamline all the things that we're bringing to the board so that we can be more effective and efficient. So, Manager Khan.
Thank you very much. I know I've been called worse, so that's all right. Okay, so I just, if you'll indulge me for a couple of minutes, I'll provide a brief overview of the contents of the report, just to give a little bit more context to the discussion. So essentially, the report before you is proposing a three-month trial with respect to a couple of recommendations. The first one being amending the current 2023-24 meeting schedule for the next three months, starting in February. And then the second recommendation being to create a little bit of flexibility around when private session occurs within a meeting. And the recommendation being that private session now occur after public session, and public sessions start promptly at 6:00 PM. So with respect to the first recommendation, you'll see the proposed schedule in front of you. It does include February, March, and April. And in that, you'll see that it reflects one board meeting and one Committee of the Whole meeting. Now, in doing a quick scan of comparable-sized boards, or maybe larger boards, this isn't an inconsistent practice. Many boards do only have one board meeting a month, but of course, that's enhanced by other committee work. Sometimes it's a policy and governance committee. Our equivalent would be Committee of the Whole. And then, of course, there's all the other committees that trustees and staff are involved with. So having the one board meeting, of course, doesn't mean that there isn't an opportunity to meet because of all the great work that's being done in other committees. So the rationale for the first recommendation, there are many. One is, you may or may not have been impacted by this, but when we have a board meeting following the week of, when we have a board meeting the week immediately after Committee of the Whole meeting, and there are items that are to go from Committee of the Whole to the board meeting, staff and trustees have all of maybe 18 hours to prepare their items to get on the board agenda. If there is a substantive discussion at Committee of the Board the night prior, that really does not provide the necessary time to go through all those changes and submit those items in a ready state. And so it creates that undue pressure. If there were to be a board meeting, a gap week, and then a Committee of the Whole meeting two weeks after, and then subsequently you follow that pattern, it creates the requisite time to make proper recommendations and not create that undue compression. So that's the first, that's the first point. Furthermore, because the submission of items for an agenda happened Thursday at noon, and the publishing of the agenda happens Friday, that doesn't really give enough time for staff and the Vice Chair and the Chair of the Board to go through the items and properly digest and follow up and do all of the things that need to be done to create an effective agenda. And so part of this recommendation is to allow for that time to go through those items. The next item is, one of the things that I know sometimes can impact boards and just regular meetings is that when you have a schedule with a certain amount of meetings, meetings will go forward without there being really a need for the meeting and very few items on an agenda. By fixing the schedule, you're creating an environment where every agenda is a fulsome agenda and has lots of items on it, because you're not splitting maybe 10 items amongst two meetings. You're having those 10 items in one, and it creates efficiencies and effectiveness for the meeting body as a whole. By having one board meeting a month and Committee of the Whole once per month, it also provides an additional Wednesday in a month for PD offerings for trustees to take part in. So that's an added bonus, because it provides an additional time for those things, as well as additional committee work, which I know everyone is involved with. And then the last point on this recommendation that I wanted to make is that this doesn't preclude the ability to call a special meeting where there are urgent items. Where that arises, that capacity always, that capability always exists. And so having the one board meeting definitely scheduled doesn't mean that urgent items can't be addressed. And also too, on a longer-term outlook, the board schedule, the board meeting schedule can be built so that when we know that there are busy months, for example, June, those can be the exceptions to the rule, and there can be two board meetings in that month plus a Committee of the Whole. Sort of the schedule is yours as you see fit. But where we can gain efficiencies, my recommendation is to do so. With respect to the second recommendation, that's just around adjusting the timing of private session and starting promptly at 6:00 PM for public session. There are a few there are a few points noted in the report with respect to why that makes sense. Having a set time of 6:00 PM for public session really makes the scheduling of presentations, delegations, a streamlined process. It reduces any sort of confusion around timing of when will private end, when will public start. Also too, where there are no, where there is no need for a private session on any given night, the meeting can promptly start at 6:00 PM, and there is no requirement for everybody to wait until the 7:00 PM start time. So it allows for things to get rolling, so to speak, more expeditiously. Also too, by having private session after public, it allows for staff that are not required for private session to excuse themselves earlier in the night, as well as for student trustees who do not participate in private session. It allows them to be able to excuse themselves as well earlier in the night. And also eliminates the need to go back into private session where we've had private first. The item is lengthy, then you go into public, and then you have this sort of disjointed process of going back into private session after. And with that, I'll leave it at that, and thank you for intending.
I'm going to read the motion. Be it resolved that the Halton District School Board adopt the amended Board and Committee of the Whole meeting schedule for a three-month trial period starting February 1, 2024, as outlined in Report 24005. And be it further resolved that a report regarding the feasibility of continuing beyond the trial period be brought to Committee of the Whole in April 2024 for discussion. Trustee Gray, would you like to make this motion?
Yes.
Vice Chair Oliver, would you second this motion?
I second it.
Thank you. And I see a number of people on the speakers list, so I will start with Trustee Gray.
Thank you very much, through the Chair. When I looked at in our minutes, or, sorry, our agenda today, and I looked at the board report, which is Report Number 24002, I looked at how many items were listed from February 7th meeting onwards. In other words, for the three periods, or three months period. And it came up to about a page and a half of reports. Then I looked at last year for the same report, in January 5th it was reported, and it was about the same length. I thought, okay, well, this is good. And then I started to compare apples for apples, oranges for oranges. And it all pretty much added up. But then, what I did was I took up the report for June 1st, the board report, and all of a sudden, that two-page report became eight pages in length. In other words, it built through the spring, we got more and more reports being added, and this, that, and the other. So my question is, or my concern is, given that this would show that we build and add more through the year, are we concerned at all that the way it's laid out right now for the next three-month period is doable? And I would also add that I did find some reports that are to be annuals that are not on our current list.
So through the chair, thank you for that question, trustee Gray. Part of this exercise goes in tandem with us becoming more proactive in forecasting the items that are going to move forward to board. So the senior team has been undergoing an exercise to project when, for example, APs are going to come forward to have a better understanding as to which committee of the whole meetings they're going to hit and then subsequently which board meetings. So that is, it all goes in tandem because I understand your concerns of you don't want everything all of a sudden to show up in one meeting and then it's a very big meeting. So that is something that we are looking to address at the same time.
Thank you. And I'm happy to provide this just as a comparison and some of my notes from reading. Thank you.
Do you have a follow-up? Thank you very much. The next speaker is trustee Baxter.
Thank you. Through Chair Collard, to Manager Khan. So first of all, thank you for doing this. I'm always a fan of efficiencies and looking at how we do things and if there's a place for improvement, always in favor. The second recommendation I would very much support. I think that makes a lot of sense. It's a good change for valuing the time of staff, which is important to all of us and just seems to make sense based on what I've seen. I've only been here for a year and a bit, but I think recommendation two makes a lot of sense. I have some concerns about recommendation one and just wonder if, you know, you've sort of looked at some alternatives. So I do understand the issue of finalizing agenda items after committee of the whole. So I'm wondering, I know that traditionally, there's only four of us who are new this term, but traditionally trustees have kept all Wednesdays available. I'm wondering if you looked at possibly moving the board meeting that happens after committee of the whole to the following week for the remainder of the year and see if that helps a little bit. I do understand that that time crunch makes a lot of sense. So that would be moving the February 21st board meeting to the 28th, the April 17th board meeting to the 24th, as opposed to canceling. I'm a bit concerned about canceling board meetings. Following up on what trustee Gray was saying, it does seem like we're in for a very busy season. As Superintendent Nagoya has pointed out, we do have some challenging budget issues to discuss. We have multi-year plan coming. And I'm just concerned about cutting in half the number of times that we have an opportunity to come together as a group in public and discuss important issues. I would definitely be in favor when we go through that process, and I can't remember when it is, maybe you can remind me, trustee, or Chair Collard, of when we sit down as a group and make the schedule for next year to look back, as trustee Gray has done, and sort of look at, well, how many times did we really need to have, you know, maybe have that retrospective look? I'm a bit concerned about doing that now and committing to cutting our meeting times in half at this point. I think that was, oh, and the other thing I just wanted to mention is, you know, I've only been here a year and a bit, but I've only, I only recall one meeting being canceled due to agenda items. It doesn't seem that's something that happens at this board on a regular basis. I do appreciate the efficiency thing and we've got a new chair and a new vice chair who probably have some ideas of, you know, how to move meetings along. I'd be more in favor of leaving the schedule as it is or, like I said, moving that second board meeting of the month a week to ease that pressure and then just see how it goes, if maybe that would be an option. Thank you.
Through the chair, thank you trustee Baxter. So candidly, I did not look at that option. Just off the top of my head, what I can, I could probably see happening is that then what that creates is two board meetings back to back, like one week and then the next meeting they would be back to back. I'm not sure what the utility of that may necessarily be. The other thing that I would just offer as consideration is that comparable and larger boards do stick to one board meeting a month. And as I mentioned in my introductory comments, that is enhanced by the committee work that happens outside of that. So I know that what I have seen with previous decision bodies is where there are needs for budget meetings, for example, there is a, there would be, for example, a budget meeting specifically, a board meeting specifically designated to discuss the budget for items such as what you're speaking about and where there are certain months that are known to be busier months, for example, in June, then a second board meeting would, of course, be appropriate and stay in the schedule. So I would hope that it's not perceived as taking away opportunities to be collaborative and come together because those opportunities can be created for the months that they're expected.
You can follow up, but I also wanted to address your question about the timing of when we would be doing the scheduling. Last year was the very first time we've ever done that. So it's a brand-new practice and I was thinking we would probably do it at March committee of the whole. If you have a follow-up, you have all of nine seconds.
Okay, so it's a quick one, just an observation, looking at other boards. Now, I don't have experience on other boards, but I did attend virtually, and I think trustee Zhang might have been there as well, a meeting, it was committee meeting at the Hamilton Board. And I noticed that they have committee meetings, like you were talking about, can't remember the title of that committee, but it was done online in such a way that any member of the public could attend virtually. And that's what I did. And we don't have that ability here. And so I'm just, you know, caution comparing us. We can certainly make changes. I'm not against making changes. But as we currently stand, I'm a bit concerned, again, about reducing the number of times that all of us can be in the room publicly to have conversations.
Would you like to respond?
Thank you for that question, trustee Baxter, or comment. One of the other things that I'm looking at is modernizing our processes with respect to how committees are conducted. And one of the things, I was on a call today talking about how we can provide electronic access for the public to listen into committee meetings. Guidelines in that regard are going to be developed and that is work that is in progress. So I 100% hear you. I share those concerns and it's something that I think that will be a quick one for us this year, but more on that will come.
Thank you very much. And our next speaker is trustee Sholoworth.
Thank you through the chair. I don't know if it's to Manager Khan or if it's just a general statement. First of all, similar to trustee Gray and trustee Baxter, I fully and 100% support the second motion. I think first and foremost for the student trustees, if we're wanting them to come and have dinner with us and everything before, and then they have to sit and wait. And so I think that's a really, it's kind. So I just think it's really nice and I think that's a great opportunity as well for staff who don't have to stay to go home as well. I do, I would love for this to work and I think because it's a trial, I think it's great. I think the trial is great. But I do worry, and I do remember speaking sometime during the last year, at the fact that our board meetings used to have to be extended. We would have to extend the time for the board meetings. And then all of a sudden, that all, we started ending really early. And I always wonder, where did all the information go? So that is my concern, is that by doing this, again, first of all, are we creating longer board meetings? Which in the end of the day, if we're having private at the end that's going after 10 o'clock, and I think of trustees in this room when we did have those extended meetings, saying, my brain's not even functioning anymore. Those are just some of the things that I worry about if we're trying to pack so much into once a month. But I think as a trial, I think it's a great opportunity to see if we can make it work because I love efficiencies as well. So thank you so much for all the work that you did, Manager Khan.
Thank you. Trustee Bryden.
Thank you. One question, one thought. The thought is, a lot of the richest discussion I find around this table happens in committee of the whole. And to the extent that we use committee of the whole to have those more in-depth discussions and board to approve the motions that have been hammered out at committee of the whole, one of the options to look at may be increasing the number of committee of the whole meetings. And that could exist informally in what you proposed here, that a budget meeting gets added as a committee of the whole meeting or an additional meeting is added. It's not necessarily two every month, but there are months with two committee of the whole meetings. The question is whether the change in timing, public and private requires a motion of this board or whether we can simply proceed as is.
I can answer that. Our bylaw says that private precedes public, so we do need a motion.
Okay. I would be happy to make that motion.
Next on the speakers list is trustee Amos.
Thank you. And through you, thank you so much, Manager Khan, for all the hard work that you've put in. I have lived through many, many, many iterations of the way this board has worked. And what you're proposing to me is similar to what we did, I don't know, 15 years ago, I'm thinking. We ended up, we were having two committee of the wholes, even though they weren't necessarily called that, and one board meeting to ratify. And my concern is a little bit similar to some of my fellow trustees in that, about having just one committee of the whole and one board meeting. I'm concerned that the board meeting could be excessively long because I have been here till midnight many, many times and your brain doesn't work that well. And I would hate to see shortened board meetings become excessively long. And I'm sure nobody around either you shape, you horseshoe would want to be here that late. My, but if we only need one meeting to ratify everything that's happened at committee of the whole, I think that's great. And it would maybe give committee of the whole more opportunities for committees to actually work within as opposed to having separate meetings, which is what has happened in the past as well. Though some of those subcommittees were able to have meetings at the same time within the room through committee of the whole and then have those broader discussions. I do have one question, though. By moving private session to the end, which would be amazing for staff so they can go home and for a lot of the other reasons that you've mentioned, don't some of those items still have to be ratified in public? Would that mean then we'd have to rise again into public? Or would that be saved until the next board meeting where they would be ratified?
We would go into public to ratify immediately. So it, but that's not the same as going back into public after private, or private after public. It would be a short amount of time to ratify.
Okay. My concern around that is sometimes some of that is important to the public and depending how long private is, which is only supposed to be an hour, but it could be so late in the day. That's my only concern. Otherwise, I like the idea. I think it's great. That was my only thought around that piece of it. But, and my other comments are for what they're worth.
And our last speaker to this item is trustee Daniele.
Thank you. Like trustee Amos, when you've been around a while, I've been around this table for 17 years. I've seen a lot of changes and I think change is good. There's a lot in this that I really like. I even notice even amongst like the first year of a term, people are finding their feet, they're talking a little more, things like that. And I think maybe going to the one and being concerned about it going too long, we may govern ourselves a little bit better and actually stick to the items on the agenda and be a little more efficient. So I do like that. I really like moving private session after public session. Will it work? I don't know. But I would hate to not try it because we don't know if it'll work. It's a three-month trial. I think there's a lot of positives to it, a lot of benefits for it, and so I will be supporting it.
And I just want to add one bit of clarity. The question about whether or not we needed a motion to change the bylaw. Since this is a three-month trial, there is no motion to change the bylaw. That would come after deciding in April whether or not we want to proceed, which was one of the reasons we went with a three-month trial period so that we didn't go and have to change all of our documents. And then if we didn't like it, we would have had to change them back. So the three-month trial period became the go-to on that. And I see I have people back on the speakers list. Trustee Baxter.
Thank you through your chair. Just one more quick point I forgot to mention. I guess building on the concerns that's been mentioned about excessively long meetings. I know when you're building the agenda, you know, you're putting the number of items in there that seem reasonable for a given meeting. For example, this agenda item has five minutes allocated to it. And I know I took my full three. So I'm just concerned that it may appear on paper for our next, you know, the first meeting and this new abbreviated schedule that we can get our agenda done. But, you know, as has been pointed out, I'd hate to be here at midnight because, you know, we all needed our three minutes to really work through. I mean, that's what we're here for, right? Is to get the views of everyone at the table and to make sure we're really making informed decisions. And so I'm just concerned that we would either, you know, be too efficient and not really be fully analyzing the decisions we're making or, on the other hand, staying until midnight. But, you know, only doing it once a month. So, thank you.
Thank you for that, trustee Baxter. And first-time speaker, trustee Oliver, and then we will have trustee Amos.
Yes, through your chair. So I will be supporting this recommendation, both of the recommendations. I do share some of the same concerns expressed by my fellow trustees. However, as we tell our students, you won't know until you tried. And so I think it's worth giving this a try and having a discussion in April to see how we've done and what other perhaps improvements we can make or changes. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is trustee Amos and then we will hear from trustee Zhang.
Thank you. I just want to say I will be supporting this trial because I do believe we need to try. But I just want to be clear that at the end of the trial, we will be reconvening as a board to make the final decision. Thank you.
Yes, the second motion stipulates that we will have a committee of the whole meeting to review and any decisions coming forward from that would impact May and going forward. And the last speaker on this will be trustee Zhang.
Okay, thank you. So I have the same concern about the recommendation number one, so I don't want to repeat that. And so, because the recommendation also includes we can use the third week for PD sessions. Actually, we do need the PD sessions, but if we reserve the time for PD sessions and if we have something, if we don't, we cannot resolve all of the reports in the first board meeting and we will have no chance to arrange a special meeting in the third week. So I will recommend the third week, the meeting, we make it optional this, like December. And so we still have that in the spot, in our calendar. But it's optional if we can resolve, this is a trial. So if we can resolve all of the reports, complete all of the discussions in the first, we try to complete everything in the first board meeting, then we don't need the third week. And otherwise, we can, we still need it. So that's why. That's my recommendation. Right. Instead of delete, I want to make that optional. Thank you.
Would you like to respond to that or can I? It's up to you. Okay. We all need to also remember that special board meetings can be called. And if there is an urgent need or if there are enough items, I am not averse to calling a special board meeting. The bonus for special board meetings is that they are abbreviated agendas. So it allows us to get to the work of the agenda much quickly, much more quickly. And if it's required, I will have no compunctions about scheduling one. And I would do that in any month of any year. It wouldn't just be during the It, it wouldn't just be during the trial period. So I think we need to bear that in mind as well. Thanks. So seeing no other speakers on the speakers list, please cast your votes. Thank you very much. That passes unanimously. Congratulations, Manager Khan. Our next item is three, is 4.1.4 Revised Estimates, 2023-2024, Report 24008, submitted by Superintendent Nagoy.
Thank you, Chair Colard. And through the chair to all trustees, the report in the package provides the details of the revised estimates for the current year. As you know, as part of ministries require reporting, we have to submit the revised estimates in December of every year. And they do require board approval if we are requesting to use additional surplus. And in this case, we are requesting additional surplus to be used as compared to what was approved in June during the budget time. So just a very quick summary. In June, the board approved deficit budget a compliant but deficit budget of 7.2 million. And the current revised budget is also a compliant but deficit budget of 7.7 million. So approximately 500,000 higher. The key reasons for that are, one, there was a loss of revenue compared to projections in both panels, but in particularly in the secondary panel. In total, we've lost about 530 students. And we're seeing that growth taper off and actually moving our projections into declining board for the next year or two. The, so overall, the revenues as a result are, as, as it relates to the grants for student needs, are lower than projected in June by about 400,000. And there have been additional revenues, in particular the interest revenue due to higher cash balances and the interest rates that compensate that. So overall, revenues are 1.6 million higher than the budget. The expenses, however, are also higher than budget by 2.1 million. And the, the main reason is a result of increasing the, the supply cost staffing as we were reviewing the year-end trends as well as the current months to date. We've already talked about the enrollment. So you do have a requirement. Under the regulation, the board has to approve not only the amount of the operating budget, but also the in-year deficit elimination plan in the amount of 7.7 million, which is attached in Appendix G of your report. And that plan will become the basis for our discussions for budget planning for 2024, 2025 school year as we are required to action the identified reductions. And Jay and myself would be happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Let's get the motion on the floor. Be it resolved that the Board of Trustees approved the 2023-2024 Halton District School Board revised PSAB operating budget in the amount of 885,352,885 dollars, and that the Superintendent of Business Services and Treasurer be authorized to proceed with the expenditure of funds as outlined in Appendix D. Be it resolved that the Board of Trustees approved the 2023-2024 in-year deficit elimination plan in the amount of 7,666,942 dollars, and that the Superintendent of Business Services and Treasurer be authorized to action the plan as outlined in Appendix G. Trustee Daniele, would you make this motion?
Yes, I would.
Trustee Amos, would you second this motion?
Yes, please.
Is there any debate? Trustee Shuttleworth.
Thank you. Through your chair to Superintendent Nagoy. So I've spoken a little bit about with this, with you about this before. And I look at this and I look at the fact that we are continually getting reduced funding from the government. And you and your team are creative and find ways to budget and organize the money. But at the end of the day, we are getting less money from the government. And by approving the budgets that we're doing, we're basically saying to the government, keep giving us less money because we can be creative and we can find ways to work with that less money. Now, I noticed in here at the bottom, it says that there is a high risk that next year, our budget might be noncompliant. So that puts us at risk. So what my quest, or my, and I, I kind of spoke to you about this at the end of last year. By approving this and by saying that it's okay, is there another way to do this so that we can, in a sense, be pushing back, saying, we can't, we can't operate without more money from the government? Because right now, what we're saying is we are creative, we are strategic, we can do it. And so they give us less money. So I'm just wondering, by not approving this, does that, I don't want to go against the team, but I just wondered, does that then send a message to the government saying, we're trying, but we just can't do it, particularly in that if we are a noncompliant budget? Then that's our fault. So.
Thank you for, for that question. And you're absolutely correct. So we are, we're being creative, but we're also drawing down our surplus. So at the end of the day, what we've presented is the needs of the system exceed the ministry funding by 7.7 million. And if you don't approve, we're not allowed to spend the funds. That's the, the concern right now. However, the, to, to your question, I think that discussion is something that we need to evaluate. We have a couple of options as part of the budget planning for next year. So next year, to be compliant, we're not allowed to use our reserves. We're not allowed, we don't even have this ability without ministry approval, even for a dollar spent. And even though we still have reserves. As your treasurer, I wouldn't recommend that we continue spending our reserves at this rate because we're quickly depleting them. In the last three or four years, we've spent a lot of our reserves, and that makes me nervous. And I know that our support and our focus and priorities for our students, for, you know, for the system. And to that effect, looking at 7.7 million to find in savings and efficiencies next year, looking at the reduction in enrollment, which will be a reduction in, in funding. So we'll just make the problem worse. Not sure how creative we can be next year. So, so, so the options next year will be, do we really make those drastic reductions and be compliant? Or is the board going to look at other options that may be noncompliant? So a deficit budget require ministry approval? So those are the, the kind of options we need to discuss as we're moving into next year. This year is not, we're not in that situation. But we are using our, our surplus. If the trustees don't approve, we cannot action this. So we would need to know what is it that you do approve? Do we go back to the 7.2 million? And then we have to find half a million in, in reductions? That, that's really the two options right now. And in, yes, you cannot approve it. But that means we need, we go back and we have to make a reduction of half a million.
So can I have a follow-up? Briefly. Yeah, I've got 1 minute and 22 seconds. So again, so with that extra half a million dollars that we have now increased it by, my worry by approving, and I don't want to not approve because I don't want to say I don't have 100% faith in what your team has done. But I worry that by saying yes, there's another message that's happening there. That I worry that, again, what we're doing is cutting off our nose to spite our face because then next year, we're coming into a budget that we will either not be able to approve because we can't. Whereas now, when we have the choices, is there another creative way that we can look at this half a million extra dollars that we're spending in a way that sends a message to the government and the funding? Just food for thought.
It, it really, at this point, it would mean we have to reduce something. So what is it that we want to take out of the budget? And, and that would be the impact to the system, also the message, but it will impact the system.
Yeah, so I would, if I may, through the chair, suggest that we, well, I mean, trustees will be able to make their own decisions at the table. But my recommendation would definitely be to support the work that we're doing this year, eliminate the deficit in year so that we don't disrupt what we have planned for this year. And certainly, there's opportunities for when we start talking about next year's budget.
Just in my last 27 seconds. I just think that, and again, I, I don't, I, I do not want to be against it. But I just think that it would maybe make a difference. It would make parents notice that we aren't able to do what we're trying to do. So I'm not saying that's what I want, but I'm just saying I think we need to be thinking about, by approving, what are we doing?
Thank you. Trustee Baxter.
Thank you, through the chair to Superintendent Nagoy. Thank you for a very comprehensive report. Your team, you and your team always provide those types of reports to us, and it helps us do our job. So thank you. Very quickly, I just wanted clarification. The, the line increases in supply staff costs to align with year-end trends. I wonder if you could just clarify the meaning of that? So does that mean that what has been observed in terms of supply teacher, I'm assuming costs from the year and last year is now being realized and causing an increase? Is that correct?
So that, that is correct. When we project the costs for, uh, supply costs, for example, we look at the past number of years. We take away some of the COVID years because they were a little bit, you know, there are some different guideline, guidelines and, and requirements. And, and we factor in growth, number of staff, et cetera, so we can come up with a number. At budget time, we did not have the full impact of supply costs for the prior year. We do now. And we also had the first couple of months. So we've put that into the equation, and we realize that the costs for, the, the supply costs are going up. And I'll give you an example. When we looked at budget time in last year, how much we were overspent compared to funding in supply costs, it was around 7, 7.8 million, I would say. And now we're at 10.1. So, so that, that is compared to funding, not compared to budget, but it, it's a reality. It is, the, the plan is centrally negotiated. So it is outside of management and the board's purview, unfortunately, in terms of the, the plan design. But the consequences are it's not fully funded and it's been going up and up over the years. So we've captured that additional cost that we expect to incur based on most recent trends. And that's brought up the cost of, by a couple billion.
So just sort of clarification. So are we seeing increased absenteeism, therefore requiring more supply personnel? Or is it just an increase in the cost of personnel itself?
There's two factors. There is a slight increase in absenteeism for some groups. But also, it's more fill rates, I would say. So in the past, because we've had a lot of absenteeism due to the requirements for isolation, et cetera, et cetera, we had lower fill rates as well. So that supply rates were lower. We are back to more normal fill rates. So we've captured those. And so those are two, how, how much you're able to cover versus how much absenteeism you have. So there's two factors.
Just sort of a, a comment to, to the room. We do have a letter attached to our agenda from EPO expressing concerns about the conditions in, in classrooms. And that's why I was asking, you know, are we seeing higher absenteeism? And is that maybe a discussion we should put on an agenda at some point to explore in a deeper way? Thank you.
Yes, in response to that, I'm planning to put that on an agenda for Committee of the Whole so that we can have a more fulsome discussion. Next on the speakers list is trustee Bryden.
Thank you. I would echo that, that approving this is, is the right way to go. And at the same time, we do need to send a message. And we, we happen to have a Fair Funding Committee that is working on mobilizing that message. And I would extend the invitation to trustee Shuttleworth to join that group if she is passionate about it.
Thank you, trustee Bryden. Trustee Gray.
As a follow-up to trustee Shuttleworth's comments here, we have, in a sense, a luxury in that we've, we have some reserves that we can draw down. And, and I know it's getting very nervous-like because we've drawn down year after year after year. What are the boards out there doing that didn't have a reserve to draw down but find themselves in the same position of us? How are they handling it?
Thank you for that question. Through the chair to trustee Gray. I think there's two situations out there. So if they don't have the funding to draw down, they are making significant, and they have been making significant cuts to services, to students, to programs. So they're very, very lean in terms of what they offer. And I'm sure, looking at EQAO and other metrics, we can probably tell the implications of that. The other side is they go into an, an actual accumulated deficit, and they're under ministry review or supervision. And, and with a plan to try to bring them on, onboard. At that point in time, the ministry takes over and makes the decisions for us.
Yeah, let's avoid that one. Next on the speakers list is trustee Amos.
Thank you very much. And thank you for making us aware of the situation that we are in and how how difficult next year is going to be. I mean, the fact that we have an almost $8 million deficit that we will probably have to cut for next year is going to be really difficult. And that is, so just so everyone is aware, the Fair Funding Committee is coming to Committee of the Whole and is going to ask for all of your input. We are looking at, we've a direction that we have plotted and the items that we want to include. And we're going to ask for all of your feedback because we want everybody to be included in it because we all have to, to share the message the same way. So, and thank you to Superintendent Nagoy for all of your help because this is such a complex topic and it is multi-layered. And the fact that we're in the situation that we're in is because we are underfunded. We're not because of the being one of the lowest-funded boards. That has nothing to do with it. It's about the funding. So just wanted to make everybody aware it's coming to Committee of the Whole next week.
Thanks very much, trustee Amos. We have exhausted our speakers list. So I am going to bring up the topic on the voting list and ask you to please cast your votes. Thank you. That passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Superintendent Nagoy. Next up on our agenda is 4.1.5, April 2024, Professional Activity Day Date Change, Report 24009, submitted by Associate Director Salmini. Get the motion on the floor. Be it resolved that the Halton District School Board approved the amendment of the 2023-2024 school year calendar by moving the Professional Activity Day scheduled for Monday, April 22, 2024, to Monday, April 8, 2024. Trustee Almud, would you make this motion? Trustee Shuttleworth, would you make this motion?
Yes, I will.
Trustee Jiang, would you second this motion?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Associate Director Salmini, would you like to speak to the report?
Yes, I will, quickly. So we've been in collaboration with the Co-Terminist Board, with the Halton Catholic Board, around making this recommendation. And the reason for it is, is that on Monday, April 8th, we are expecting a total solar eclipse. And so, as exciting as that is, in many ways, it's also concerning, given the timing, because we're expecting darkness during dismissal times at our schools. And so we're trying to be proactive in making this change, so that we can avoid any challenges that families might face. You know, things like students experiencing darkness at a time of day that they're not used to could cause them stress. Looking into the sunlight directly could have physical implications for students, and also just the busyness of our parking lots in terms of transportation and movement and it being dark. So they are also, this actually already went to their board, so our plan is that if it is approved, that we would communicate out by the end of next week to families, so they have ample time to make arrangements.
Thank you very much, Associate Director Salmini. I see no speakers on the speaker's list, so I'm going to bring up the voting screen. Please cast your votes. Thank you. Once again, that passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Associate Director Salmini.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda are the items for deferred action. We have 4.2.1, Oakville Northeast Number 3 and Number 5 Boundary Review. Report 24006 and Appendix D, submitted by Manager Thibault and Superintendent Proto. A reminder to trustees that this will be voted on at the next board meeting.
Evening, everyone. So I'm happy to report at this point in time that we're reaching the end of the Oakville Number 3, Number 5 Boundary Review process. First and foremost, I'd just be remiss to not thank all of our parent representatives that participated within the process, as well as all the trustees and senior team that went through it all. So again, I just want to extend a great thank you. So tonight, what we're presenting is the director's recommendation as to what option should be proceeding forward. So at the end of the day, it was option number seven. I do want to note that this is an option that was unanimously recommended by our Boundary Review Committee, as well as then endorsed by our Boundary Review Steering Committee. There was no other option. And it was also the one that was preferred by the overall community. So the only real major change that we made are further enhancements to it to, you know, enhance the implementation, so that we're better managing our resource in terms of portable movements and relocations by providing more legacy exemptions, as well as trying to minimize student disruption as much as we can, which are all things that we heard from the community. So we're presenting this report this evening, so both the report, as well as Appendix D, will outline how we're implementing this over the next three years. These trigger, which are triggered by the opening of both Oakville Number 3 and Oakville Number 5. So we'll be seeing changes over for September next year, and then when we open the two schools in the subsequent years. Superintendent Proto and myself are here to add or respond to any questions you may have. And again, as you mentioned, we will be coming back on January 24th to see final approval on this. Thanks.
Thank you very much. We do have a speaker's list. Trustee Gray.
Thank you very much, through the chair. I know that every boundary review is specific to communities and circumstances, and number of schools involved, and so on and so forth. When I read this, it seemed to be very rich in the word legacy. It kept coming up, and that, you know, that siblings were able to stay, and this, that, and the other, and so on and so forth. I just would ask this question. Is this, is this a deviation from what has happened in other boundary reviews previously? In the sense of where we draw the line in terms of siblings being able to stay or join others in a school, and therefore get busing, and so on and so forth? Is there any deviation, or have we pretty much been consistent here?
I'd say there, through you, Madam Chair, to trustee Gray, I'd say there's been some deviation. And for the most part, I'd say that what we're sticking to is, you know, trying to be fiscally responsible in how we're managing our resources. So I'd say that in the past, or in more recent times, I'd say we usually just looked at grade eights as being the grade that we would provide legacy exemption for, and transportation would really be dependent. In this scenario here, given that a number of these schools were holding schools for new areas, and that they've been, you know, holding for a while in wait for Oakville Number 3 and Number 5, as well as the fact that we've had these schools that have a significant amount of portables already on site. For us, it was just kind of managing the resources. So as a good example, if you look at the relocation of students, our French immersion students from Dr. David R. Williams over to Forest Trail. Yes, we could look at sending everyone, save and except for grade eights, to Forest Trails. But what we would be effectively doing is then burdening ourselves with the cost of relocating portables that are already on site. That cost of relocation to Forest Trail to then just remove them later. So this is where we were doing a little bit more of a balancing act to say, well, instead of creating more pressures by relocating, by offsetting pressures at another school, we'll just let some legacy exemptions occur, so that we're slowing the removal of portables and slowing the growth at these other schools. And in a lot of cases where we are providing legacy exemption for siblings, there's not as, they would be transported otherwise, or they would be walking anyway, so there is no additional cost to it. And again, it was just a balancing act of, you know, either we pay for all of those portable relocations and, you know, increase the pressure at the recipient's school to just see it dwindle, or just kind of balance it out and say, we'll keep the portables on that site. We'll start transitioning in growth, and then we give and take in terms of the additional cost of transportation, whether or not it's there. So I think in principle, yeah, you may see some deviations, but at its core, what we're trying to do is just manage our resources better, so that we're not incurring costs unnecessarily.
Go ahead.
And just a quick follow-up, secondary question, and that is, when we open new schools and we put special programs in them, like French immersion, have we found ourselves in a similar historical moment where, very soon thereafter, the special program has to move because that school is overpopulated? Has this been a trend that we've experienced? And so, because my question would lead then, should we ever be putting a special program in a newly opened school?
Through Madam Chair, to trustee Gray, I think that has been what's been happening in the past, and that's why we're looking at removing French immersion from the north. Historically, north of Dundas, we had, now we had French immersion. Its capacity was surpassed, and then we had to redirect students elsewhere to Palermo. We then transitioned it over to Dr. David R. Williams, and the same story reoccurred, where, again, we have 24 portables at Dr. David R. Williams. I have a redirection in place. So what we're doing is we're accelerating the growth of our high-growth schools by introducing these programs that draw from a wider area. So one of the main focuses of this was to say, okay, well, until things stabilize in the north, which we would all like to have programming available more equitably throughout the region, we need to wait till that stabilizes. So we're not just creating this scenario where we're constantly opening schools and relocating the program. So in here, what we're doing is we're maximizing use of our empty spaces south of Dundas. We're accommodating the program. We're combining our resources, whether it's staffing, or the size of the program, the number of students. And we're trying to let the north, in this case, north of Dundas, the north Oakville Secondary Plan community, stabilize a bit. And our intent is, perhaps when Oakville Number 4 comes into play, the next school that comes, we can reassess to see, are things stabilized enough where we can start accommodating those programs to serve the area, while not just accelerating its growth, so we have to create more disruption? So that was one of the main drivers for this, and why the ultimate recommendation here does not involve introducing a new French immersion school in north Oakville. It's to, let's rely on our single-track school south of Dundas and let things stabilize for a bit.
Thank you. The next speaker is trustee Shuttleworth.
Thank you, through your chair. This is just a quick question. First of all, I can only imagine how tricky this was from all the letters that section, there's more than 26, because it goes past the alphabet. So I can only imagine how difficult this was to navigate. My question is, is I know there are always great positives, and there's reasons why we are choosing, or why option seven is the one being suggested to us. I am sure there are going to be people that are not happy with this. There's always, there's always going to be something. So what my question really is, is what are we to expect in terms of concerns for this option?
Through Madam Chair, to trustee Shuttleworth, I'd say that there are some of the communities that we didn't hear as much of a voice through the feedback survey and through the public information. I would suspect that they may be wanting to come and express that they don't want to be the ones to move, namely, the ones that are, would have been more beneficial to have option eight. But to that point, too, like any other boundary review, you know, it's it's balancing all of these different criterias and trying to find the best solution that does not adhere to all the criterias perfectly, but well enough for all of them. And ultimately, I think option seven is one that has succeeded in that, and the parent reps have endorsed it for that reason. I'd say that other options that we had could, were similar, but we have to pick one or the other. And that one, if you put all of the response and the feedback and what we've collected to date and the outcomes, I think it's the one that rises to the top. So, you know, no one's, not everyone's going to be happy. I know that's not popular, that we're removing FI in a new growth area. I know it's a want, but, you know, one thing that was very important in this review was student experience and stability. And I think what we've achieved in this option is that, is albeit there's initial impacts to students, granted. What we're really trying to avoid is that, or trying to gain, is that future stability, where we're not having to come back at it every other year, or creating these redirections. So, you know, it's, I'm hoping that it comes to fruition at the end of it all.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is trustee Amos.
Thank you, through you. I'd like to thank General Manager Thibault and his staff for all the great work that they did on this process. You made it so easy and easy to understand, able to answer all the questions that came up. And you were able to bring a whole committee to a unanimous decision about which scenario they recommended. And I mean, I don't think that's ever been done before. So thank you so much for all of the hard work that went into it, and for everything that you and your staff did. It was very much appreciated. I did want to let you know, I am hearing from some parents in Ward 7. They feel that they are, by removing French immersion, that they they don't feel it's fair. And I tried to explain that French immersion is an optional program, that we are an English-language-based school board, and that is our focus. And that we don't do French immersion by ward. We do it in areas. So Oakville has French immersion schools. Burlington has French immersion schools. Milton does, and Halton Hills. But I just thought, I wanted, I told them that I would share with other trustees the fact that they're concerned about French immersion being removed from Ward 7. And I know you've already spoken to it a little bit. And the other item that has come up about, there are some people that feel that the grandfathering maybe didn't go far enough. So I will be referring some of them to you to answer some of the questions, because you're much better at it than I am, and you have that knowledge. But I also like you to speak a little bit more about the French immersion, if you don't mind.
Through Madam Chair, to trustee Amos, yeah, you know, I do agree. It's, it's, it's a difficult one in that we're removing it from Ward 7. But arguably, too, what I would say, which I didn't mention earlier, is even if there were a school in that ward that offered French immersion, really, the only ones that would directly benefit from it, in that it's more of a walkable school in their environment, would be the school in which the program is located. We can't have French immersion at all of the schools in the north. So really, everyone else, for the vast majority, would be on a bus anyways, going to their school. And I'd say that, given where our, our, our single-track French immersion schools are self-in-dundas, they're relatively close, and on a bus, like, the distance is greater, but not as significant as one would think. So I'd say, you know, like, what we're effectively losing is maybe the ones that would have been at the French immersion homeschool. They're losing that ability to have a walk to French immersion school. But my counter to that is, if the French immersion program is something that you are very committed to, and you really want to, you know, embark in, you still have the availability to it. We are providing transportation, so that you can access that program. It's not in your community, but it's close enough, and it's within the same municipality. And again, we're pooling all these resources, so you have a significant body of, not only students, but staff and support at these facilities, so that you are getting the best program. And we're not spreading ourselves so thin that we can't provide the program as effectively if we were in every single school.
Thank you very much. Thank you. And our last speaker on this topic is trustee Bryden.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I heard you say in there that there were certain areas that were less represented in the feedback that we received. And it's certainly a concern of mine in looking at some of the boundary maps. Where I am in Burlington, different story than in Oakville, that the voices that come forward, you know, one of our criteria expressed here is student experience, and that's often evaluated through parent input. And the voices that are loudest, the squeaky wheel gets the grease, so to speak. And those voices tend to be the families that have the most resources, that have English as their native language, that can navigate a long set of options and see, understand what this means more easily. And that, that, following that path may not be consistent with our commitment to equity and inclusion in our multi-year plan. And so my, I guess my question is, on a go-forward basis, what actions could we take in boundary reviews to support parents from, who have less resources, who maybe are not English-first language, to help, to participate in these kinds of activities?
Through the chair, to trustee Bryden, thank you for your question. And we've thought about this a lot already. With any big process, we review regularly, as we should. This is my first boundary review, and of course, it's a massive one. It was a little daunting. I was flabbergasted at the way that we reach out as much as we do, in the ways that we do, as often as we did, to get input, but it wasn't sufficient. It's tough to get all student voice, all staff voice, all community voice as thoroughly as we should. So we've talked about it a bit. We're going to be having a review after. One of the things I've looked at already is the administrators. Our administrators know their school communities incredibly well, and I think they're going to be a bigger resource, not necessarily sitting at a table in a very public way, but in working with us about how to reach those communities. I also wonder about location of where we're asking for voice. Can we have a way that they can give some input at the school location? That's something that they're more comfortable with. So we're going to do a thorough review after of working with all the people that were involved in this, and also some that weren't, to say, how do we elicit more of that before we go through our next boundary review?
Thank you very much to all trustees for your questions, and thank you very much, Superintendent Proto and Manager Thibault, for bringing this to us. Again, this will come back on the 24th for decision. We are now up to Section 5, Communication to the Board. Notices of Motion. There are no notices of motion for this evening's meeting. 5.2, the Director's Report.
Thank you so much, Chair Collard, and good evening once again, everyone. Happy New Year to everyone, wishing you and your families all the very best for 2024. Certainly, 2023 had its challenges, and 2024 will have some challenges, but we will work through them together. Over the holiday, we were just saddened to receive many notices of students and/or staff who passed away. And so it was incredibly difficult for many of our school communities. And I'd just like to share in memoriam, Mackenzie Ayer, grade 11 student at Frank, Dr. Frank J. Hayden, who, you know, was well-loved. Mackenzie enjoyed the sciences, but not pig dissection, and was a friend to all. She touched the hearts of everyone she met. She played soccer and loved playing and coaching with the Burlington Bayhawks Club for many years. Most recently, Mackenzie was excited to join the Milton Magic to further advance her soccer career and follow her passion. Mackenzie possessed the natural ability to brighten someone's mood just by being with them. People's hearts were full, and they smiled brighter every time Mackenzie was around. Mackenzie will be dearly missed. We also received sad news off one of our staff, Jeremy Burningham, caretaker in the Burlington family of schools. Jeremy started with HDSB over 20 years ago, found his home working as a relief caretaker in the West. Jeremy had the ability to connect with people and to make friends with everyone he met. Teachers, secretaries, other QP staff and admin. He took pride in his work, and we always received requests from administrators that Jeremy be assigned to their school whenever possible. He was not afraid of hard work, and was, and always went over and above to make sure that our schools were ready for kids. He will be remembered by his friends and colleagues, not just for being, for his beaming smile and sense of humor, but also his kindness, his compassion, and hard work. We're so thankful for the time that Jeremy spent with us. He will be missed. We also sadly received news that Jedmo, grade 12 student at Iroquois Ridge High School, grade 12 student at Iroquois Ridge High School in Oakville, passed away. Jed was well-loved and we were going, we're going to miss him. He's missed by his staff, by staff and students. And we, our hearts are saddened by losing anyone from the HDSB family. And, you know, we, we're thankful to our TURD team and to Superintendent Barnes and his entire team who supports our schools whenever we have tragedies and passing and deaths. So I want to thank them all. And if you would be kind enough to join me in a moment of silence in recognizing or memorializing the deaths of Mackenzie, Jeremy and Jed. Thank you so much. May they never be forgotten. The Director's Annual Report is out and has been posted for some time now. Hopefully, you've had a chance to see all the highlights and the great things that have been happening in our board for the 2022-2023 school year. Of course, directly aligned with our 2020-2024 multi-year strategic plan and all of our areas of focus. There are too many items of note and highlights to, to bring to you, but you certainly can take a look yourself and see all the great things that happened in our board during the school year. So we're thankful to all our staff, students, trustees, and everyone who contributed to make the many successes that we enjoyed. Relay for Life events in 2023. We want to congratulate students of Abbey Park, MM Robinson, Milton District, Nelson High School and White Oaks, who collectively organized five Relay for Life youth events in 2023 and raised an impressive $142,558. And we are thankful for their efforts and for their contributions. So congratulations to them. Letter of appreciation from the Canadian Cancer Society is noted there for you. Last Saturday, Superintendent Frankovich and I had the opportunity to be in a gym of hundreds of students. And for anyone who is doubtful that kids don't love school, you'd have to see a packed gym of students on a Saturday during the holiday. And so they were up early, out, and they were excited. It was a great atmosphere. It was the kickoff for the first robotics. And we have several teams who are competing, Burlington Central, Craig Keelberger, Garth Webb, Georgetown District, MM Robinson, Oakville Trifogur and Aldershot. And so they're going to be competing, trying to get to Worlds. And last year, when I went to the kickoff event, I promised them that if they made it to Worlds, that I was going to make sure or ensure that the kids get to the Worlds. And didn't you know, a couple of our teams made it to Worlds last year? And they, they came to me expecting me to put them up in five-star hotels because I promised them that I would get them there. So I had to clarify my position this year in terms of what I was promising, but certainly encouraging them all and just thankful that they are part of Team Halton, that represent our board so well, and we're rooting for them all. So thank you. That concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you very much for that report, Director. Under Communications from the Chair 5.3, I just wanted to let you all know that the protocol notification letters have been sent to our locally elected officials as promotion M23-015. Are there any committee updates this evening? Seeing none, do we have an OPSA update for public session?
Yes, we do. Two quick things. The PES conference is coming up really quickly and an email went out tonight from trustee Daniele surveying the trustees present to, as to their attendance so that proper arrangements could be made while at the PES conference. So please check that email and respond to trustee Daniele as fast as you can. And just as a follow-up to the trustee OPSA Advocacy Day at Queens Park, we received a letter from our, well, from the MPP for Wellington Center, Halton Hills, Ted Arnott. And he, it's a letter in response to a letter that Donna and I sent to him with regards to our concerns and on the funding formula being currently used. And we got a great letter back and a further referral to Minister Leche. So we're awaiting his, his response back to our letter. Thank you. Trustee Daniele, is there anything that I may have missed?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you for that report, trustee Gray. I just wanted to ask that perhaps that letter could be forwarded to the Fair Funding Committee. And I think it would be really appropriate for all of us to, to try and have a meeting with our local representatives and set something up with that, in that regard. And I've spoken with the committee, the Fair Funding Committee, about that just earlier this evening. So very exciting news to have the support of one of our local MPPs. 5.6, trustee questions and comments. Vice Chair Oliver.
Thank you, through your chair. I just have a gentle reminder to staff to please make sure that you update the trustee representation on the staff-led committees as per the striking committee report and that those trustee reps receive invitations to any of the upcoming meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. Excellent reminder. That brings us to Section 6.0, Adjournment. And as our agenda is exhausted, I call this meeting adjourned.